I was glad when they said unto me,[104.48][104.72]"Come, let us worship in the house of the Lord together, to behold His beauty, to witness His glory, in this place, the house He has built for us, a place of His power, a place of His presence, a place where we can let go of our fears and take hold of faith, a place where we can gather together as one, hearts united in praise and worship for Jesus and for all the wondrous things He has done." No calamity, no sickness, no death can bring us down; for we are standing on solid rock, we are standing on Jesus. We have brought His word and His power into our homes and into our families; but we are not meant to be separated and isolated for long. For it is not alone, but together, with His family, with His church, that we will arise. Now is the time to celebrate our victory, to celebrate His name together, in this house; for this is our house of worship, this is our house of miracles.
Hello and welcome to another episode of our link up, where we gather to pray, encourage, and strengthen one another. You know, it's a pleasure to have the team with us today. We're gonna sing some songs from our new worship album, and we are gonna invite everyone. So if you can send in your prayer requests, praise reports, we would love to really find out where you are at and how we can help you with it. So team, if you have it, let's sing. The greatest story was already told. When you came to save me, it made me your own, before I even had a thought for you. A timeless tale of sacrifice. You took my place and you gave me your life, and with the cross, my life has been restored. Come on, let's sing. From death to life, broken pieces you made whole. From death to life, took my shackles, now I'm free. A love so tender, a love so sweet, came in my heart and rescued me, bringing hope that shatters all my fears. Hey, from death to life, broken pieces you made whole. From death to life, took my shackles, now I'm free. From death to life, broken pieces you made whole. From death to life, took my shackles, now I'm free. I am free. Thank you, Jesus. Come on, let's sing. This is my story, this is my song, praising my Savior all the day long. Was lost, but you found me, erased all my faults. Now I live in freedom forevermore. This is my story, this is my song, praising my Savior all the day long. Was lost, but you found me, erased all my faults. Now I live in freedom forevermore. This is my story, this is my song, praising my Savior all the day long. Was lost, but you found me, erased all my faults. Now I live in freedom forevermore. From death to life. Broken pieces you made whole. From death to life, you took my shackles, now I'm free. From death to life, broken pieces you made whole. From death to life, you took my shackles, now I'm free. From death to life.
Hallelujah. "From Death to Life," that's our declaration. You know, as a believer, your loss, your... You are lost before, you don't know your future, but to Jesus Christ, you are alive. And if you believe in the Lord Jesus, the Lord will give you new life. The Lord will give you this life that will bring you into a place of freedom, a place of victory, a place of peace, and a place of joy. And that's why I do believe that this is what God is really calling to all the generation, that God wanted you to live, God wanted you to be alive and be free in all sorts of burdens and bondage and any form of death per se. You know, the word "death" there is just literally dead, but your hope is dead, your dreams are dead, your purpose are dead. So that's why you need to come unto the Lord Jesus. And you know, this is the best way for us to declare that every person can come into a place of life. And some people are, you know, trying to figure out how to be free from this bondage of sin and this bondage of the enemy that tries to put you down. But it is true, the Lord Jesus, Jesus came to earth so that you can have this life, and this life is for freedom, for joy, and for peace. And you know, the only way for you to do that is to just receive Him. Believe on the Lord Jesus, and you will be saved, the Lord said. And the word of God says that if you receive the Lord Jesus, He will give you the right to become a child of God. And to become a child of God, that means you will enjoy every right, every privileges, every blessings of becoming a child of the Lord. And maybe you will be asking, "So how do I receive the Lord? How do I believe on the Lord Jesus?" Well, the Bible says that you open your mouth, declare with your mouth and believe in your heart that the Lord Jesus is your Savior, and He is alive, you will be saved. In fact, we can do that right now. If you want to receive the Lord Jesus, and life will come in your life and that there will be a freedom from any bondage of sin, you just have to follow after me and declare this as your personal prayer. So follow after me and say this with me. "Lord Jesus, I open my heart. I invite you to come in. Be the Lord of my life. Today I declare, you are the Lord of my life, and I receive new life coming from you. And from this day forward, I will serve you, and I will give you praise, and I will enjoy the freedom that you are giving to me. This is my prayer, in your name. Amen." You know what? If you did that in a very simple prayer, in a place where you humble yourself before the Lord, right now, instantly, new life is coming unto you. There is a freedom right now, and even at this point in time, you can just really sense there is peace, there is joy, there is freedom. You know what that is? That is the move of the Spirit of God in your life. So I just welcome you to the family. I would like you to please just type in your name on the comment section or in the decision box that comes out on the screen so that we can connect with you and we can guide you to the new relationship that you have started. Hallelujah. Can we just sing that song again? That chorus part and just declare? Amen? Come on, Erica.
From death to life, broken pieces you made whole. From death to life, you took my shackles, now I'm free. From death to life, broken pieces you made whole. From death to life, you took my shackles, now I'm free. This is my story, this is my song, praising my Savior all the day long. Was lost, but you found me, erased all my faults. Now I live in freedom forevermore. This is my story, this is my song, praising my Savior all the day long. Was lost, but you found me, erased all my faults. Now I live in freedom forevermore. From death to life, broken pieces you made whole. From death to life, you took my shackles, now I'm free. From death to life, broken pieces you made whole. From death to life, you took my shackles, now I'm free.
Praise God. You know, we're featuring the songs of New Life Music, and this song is part of the album, "To the Other Side." And this is an amazing song that declares and, you know, just tell the story of a person who gave his life unto the Lord. So Erica, can you, talking about story, you know, can you share something a little bit about the story of how you came to know the Lord? What's your life before? And how you found the Lord and just gave your life unto the Lord? Just tell us the story.
I will try to summarize, Pastor.
Yeah, just summarize, it's a very short time.
Because, you know... But I received Jesus Christ as my personal Savior and Lord in a campus outreach. So when I was still in college, one of my teacher, she is the wife of Pastor Rean, if you know Pastor Rean. She was our English professor during that time. So she would just, you know, stay at the back with us and just, you know, share and just invite us to attend a life group, to attend, you know, a service here in church. And then, from there, you know, I became, you know, active here in church. I volunteered, and my life is already changed. It all started with, you know, in the campus, you know, as a student, you know? And I just, I'm just, you know, still overwhelmed, you know, just looking back how it started with a simple conversation from that teacher. And now my life is changed. That's my story.
Praise God, you know? And I do believe that before you came to know the Lord, you know, your loss, you don't know your purpose, and yet, life right now. And look at that, you're one of our best singers in New Life Music. You know, if you come to know the Lord Jesus, you will find your purpose. You will find your purpose. And the only way to know and to find your purpose is to go back to the one who created your purpose, and that's Jesus. And that's how He wants you to be. You are created by God, your purpose comes from the Lord. And you know what? You have to go back to Him so that you can find your purpose. And you know, part of the song says that broken pieces, your life is shattered, and now it's being formed by God, and God is restoring it. I believe that there are people who are watching right now, that you experience broken life, you know, your direction, you don't have any dream. But I tell you, my friend, Jesus is the one who can make you whole, who can make you into a place of purpose because He is the one who created you. The purpose that you have in your life comes from the Lord. Go back to Him, serve Him, and give your life to Him, and you will find a place of peace and joy unto the Lord. Amen? Praise God. So Cyrus, can you share something about your story also? Talking about the story of life, you know?
Well, my story, I got saved when I was quite young, when I was eight. So my mom, you know, shared the gospel.
You're still young, Cyrus, don't worry.
I'm still young, because that was two years ago. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Yeah, but, you know, I was like, I grew up in church, but I know I'm saved, but I didn't really have an understanding of what it really means. But then, you know, come like a few years later when I fully understood what God, you know, did in my life, you know, that, I remember that verse talking about, I like what you did when you invited people to receive Jesus into their hearts today, you know, right from the get-go. The Bible says that if anyone is in Christ, he is a new creation. The old things are gone, and behold, all things have become new. So when you receive Jesus, you know, when I receive Jesus, I know I have been made new. I just didn't understand it. But then, when I grew into who God has made me to be, my new nature, I fully understood that, you know, the old me has died, and I've been given a new nature. So that's kind of like my story. And maybe people are, you know, when they pray that prayer, you know, I don't feel any different. You know, I pray the prayer, but I still feel the same way. But let me assure you, when you pray that prayer, if you made it from your heart, you have been given a new nature. And you know, Jesus is now alive in you, and you know, your story, I remember, I think it was Pastor Joseph who said it, that, you know, Jesus' story is like He came, you know, from life to death, so He died on the cross, so that our story can become from death to life. So that is our stories, and that is my story.
Powerful. You know, can you pray for the, well, young people? Like us? Like us, you know? And all people, of all ages? Can you pray that they will just really find their purpose in the Lord? You know, I believe that especially the younger generation nowadays, you know, we're just like so lost, you know? You don't know what to do with all the things and pressures of the world and discussion and standards of social media of who you are. So maybe you can pray for them right now, Cyrus.
So Father, I thank you for every person, young person, old, and everything in between. You know, if you are searching for understanding who you are, and I pray that God would just come and speak into your heart right now that you would feel like a whisper in your heart saying, "And you know, this is who you are. This is who I have called you to be." I pray that you will not be defined by what the world says you are, but you will be defined by who God says you are. And God says that you are loved, and God says that you are His child, and He has so much more in for you. And I pray that you would discover all the things that you have in store that God has put in you. And all you need to do is just come to Him and allow Him to transform you and allow Him to really, you know, put all the broken pieces together because only He can do that. Not anyone from the world can do that. Not anyone can put you together, but the one who made and created you. And you will find your purpose in Him. So I pray right now, God, for encounters, even across this screen, you know, people watching on their computers or however they're watching, I pray for God encounters. I pray that you are everywhere, that you are touching lives right now, that they would see and they would know without a shadow of a doubt that they are indeed loved and called by you, and they will discover their purpose right here, right now, in Jesus' name.
Amen. You will discover your purpose. And it's really amazing that what we're talking about here is not about entering into a religion or a group of religious people. This is about life. This is about what is the purpose of God in your life? And this is something that we need to really understand with all the things that we know about, you know, religion, or probably you are a member or part of a group of people, but you don't really find the peace and the purpose of God. It is really through Jesus Christ. And you know, I have in my heart also to pray for those people who are hurt because of church. There are people who are offended because of church, and some of them, they don't want to go to church because, you know, of the things that they have experienced probably, or they got offended, they got disappointed. You know, the source of your strength and your love and your life is coming from the Lord, and you don't have to look at the people who hurt you and disappointed you. So Jenny, I believe that maybe we can pray for those people right now. I just have this anxious right now that there are people who are watching. You know, you're so tired of church, you're so tired of what the church is doing. Maybe we can just pray for these people.
Yeah, I understand that part, especially for those people who really got hurt. And I'll just give an example. My brother right now is still mourning, and I know he's still hurting because of the passing of his wife. And there are times that he's asking, he's, you know, he's feeling lost and asking, questioning, "Why the Lord got this?" You know, so I do understand those people who are going through right now, asking questions, "Why? What happened, Lord?" But I pray, Father God, for these people who are right now lost, God. Thank you, Father, that you just visit them right now. You just visit them in their homes, God, and make them know that you love them so much, that His grace is more than enough, Lord, that He is more than enough with all those questions that in their minds, those doubts that in their hearts. There's still more for them, God. There's future, there's good future, God, for them. And I declare peace, God. This peace that is totally enveloping them right now in Jesus' name. I speak in life, not speak life, Lord, upon them right now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's just sing this line of song. "Let the peace of God, let the peace of God..." Come on, let's just sing that. "Let the peace of God be released. Let the peace of God be released. Let the peace of God be released right now. Let the peace of God be released right now. Let the peace of God be released right now. Let the peace of God be released right now. Peace of God be released right now. Let the peace of God be released right now. Let the joy..." "Be released right now. Let the joy be released right now. Let the joy be released right now. Let the joy be released right now. Let the love be released right now. Let the love of God be released right now. Let the love of God be released right now. Let the love of God be released." Yes, the love of God, the joy of the Lord. You know, joy of the Lord is your strength, my friend. The peace of God, Shalom peace that declares wholeness, restoration, "We release that over you in the name of Jesus." And I just, I just see things right now. There are, especially young people right now. Maybe you are abandoned, or there's something that is happening in your family, broken family. Just release peace upon you. Release peace upon you. You know, Chachi, can you pray for the young people? You know, a lot of young people right now are just experiencing some kind of brokenness just because of family problem. Maybe you can pray for us.
So to all the young people out there, I just want to encourage you. There is still hope for you. God is for you. And so I want to pray, Father, we thank you, God, for every young person, Lord, who comes from a broken family, God. We thank you that you are their father, Lord. And we pray, Lord, that you just call them in, God, and you give them a big hug, Lord. And we thank you that you give them people, God. You give them friends, surround them with a good community, Lord, that they will just feel your love. And even if they are, they feel broken, God, this song reminds us that you make broken pieces whole and you bring these young people from death to life, God. And you don't just save them once, you save them over and over again. And we thank you for that, Lord. We love you. Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen, amen. So tender, so powerful. You know, remember this. There is a, there's a place where you can experience love. And first and foremost, that love comes from the Lord. You have to receive from Him. But at the same time, I would like to say this, especially to those young people that we have prayed, that you are, you are, you are being put into a family. And New Life is a family. If you are looking for a place, you know, I remember when I, when I was young and until now, I'm still young, Cyrus. Do you agree with me? Amen? Praise God, you know? But I just remember when I was in high school, I was so lonely because we're, we're, I'm a broken family. I don't have any parents who can take care of me. I don't have any people who can look up to. I cannot rely to my loved ones, to my family. And so I was so lonely that time, and somebody just shared the gospel to me, third year high school. And when I received that gospel, I received the Lord Jesus, this lady who actually shared the gospel to me said, "You know what? Can you, can you just join in our church this Sunday? We want to welcome you into the family." It's not a religion, actually. It's not church, it's a family. And so I went in the church, a very small church, actually. And, well, my thinking of church is, you know, cathedral, you know, building huge. But this one is just a small garage in our province. And I said, "What kind of church is this?" you know? But I just vividly remember at this point in time when I came in into that small place, somebody smiled at me, welcomed me, and told me, she's a lady, actually, and she said, "Welcome to the family." And it is my first time to experience that in a church. I thought that church is just, you know, a religious gathering and nobody knows you. But this one, I just came in and I just realized, "Wow, this is family." And you know what, Erica? That experience to me, just to understand that since I came from a broken family, I found a new family. I found a spiritual family. And from that time on, I just connected with them. The pastor discipled me. I have some small group leaders who started Bible study. And that makes it so important to me, connections. And you know what? Again, I'm, I'm, I would like to invite everybody here. If you are looking for a place where you can be accepted, this is a place. This is new life, this is a family. And I know, I know that sometimes it's so embarrassing to come to a church and, you know, nobody knows you. Don't worry, we will welcome you and we will treat you as part of the family. and we will treat you as part of the family because you're looking for a place for connection. And if you're looking for that group of people, I just pray for you right now. Lift up your hands and just, you know, a sign of your connection to us right now. Father God, I pray for this person who are watching, literally watching right now, this LinkUp, right now you're linking him up, not only to you, but to the family. I pray that he will find this place where he is accepted, she is accepted, and that he can experience a life that is full, excited, vibrant. There is purpose. And, you know, in spite of the past and the things that this person experienced, there is new life. There is new hope. There is something that he can continue to walk into and experience the joy and the peace of God. And I release that over you right now, in Jesus' name. And again, I invite you, if you can, and if you can possibly visit us here in New Life, you are very much welcome. And if you are, you know, watching this livestream right now of LinkUp, probably this is really the moment where God is inviting you to be part of the family. Amen. And that's a celebration. You know, God wanted us to really celebrate. And, you know, as a family, let's just celebrate people who are connecting right now. Come on, let's sing that song again, Erican. Come on, let's do that. Hallelujah. Praise God. Well, thank you for joining us in LinkUp. We are so glad that you're part of what we are showing right now, this program. You know, this is not an accident, I do believe. This is part of God's plan for you. And I pray that you will open your heart, that you will continue to just experience His presence. And in this place, again, I invite you to come to New Life. We have services every Sunday, 9 o'clock, 11:30, 3:00 p.m., and 5:30. We have different ministries and services during the week. We have online services during the week. And so please come, join us. And if ever that you found New Life or, you know, found us because of this video, this livestream, please let us know. You know, let us know so that we can connect with you. Well, God bless you, and we'll see you again next time for the next episode of LinkUp.
What's happening at New Life? Calling all business people. Do you want to know more about the blessings God has in store for you? Join Gatekeepers for an online gathering to talk about the Great Wealth Transfer on April 6, Wednesday, 7 p.m. See you on Zoom.
This Easter, New Life in collaboration with Art Lounge Manila and Molito Lifestyle Center invite you to view Teteles Thai, an art installation by Christine Lim, from April 10th until the 17th at the Molito Grounds. We will also have our Good Friday service on April 15 at 5:30 p.m., and we will celebrate our risen King on all services on April 17, Resurrection Sunday.
Let's get talking on After Sunday Convo. Send in your questions about this Sunday's message, and our pastors and leaders will break it down and answer it for you. See you on ASC Mondays at 7 p.m. We also invite you to declare the Word of God through songs and prayer with us in LinkUp every Wednesday at 6 p.m. If you want to begin your day with the Word of God, then you'll be in good company in Morning Devo, Thursday to Saturday at 8 a.m. You don't have to go through life alone. We are here to help you deal with the stresses of life. Practical, psychological, and biblical guidance are available on Mental Health Matters every Thursday at 7 p.m. All of these weekly programs are broadcast live on newlife.ph on Facebook and newlifemedia.ph on YouTube. Did you accept Jesus as your Lord and Savior today? Know that your New Life family is celebrating with you. We can help you better understand your new life in Christ by attending our Link class every Monday at 6 p.m. on Zoom. Welcome to the family. Do your friends and family know that we have four onsite Sunday services yet? Make sure you invite someone to be in the room with us next Sunday. If you are joining us online, please note the schedule of our services, which will be broadcast on newlife.ph on Facebook and newlifemedia.ph on YouTube. Together, we go higher as a church. And together, we continue to make Jesus known. See you online or onsite this week.